All right, well, the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Grier?
President.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Meridate?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Stenning?
Here.
Mayor Toulpey?
All right, we all rise for the collective allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no items to be added to the agenda, so that brings us to, we do. Afraid to tell. Which item is that? Okay, Ms. Lichten will be giving the report on these items. Okay, so these are items added to the agenda. I believe first we need a vote on whether to hear them. Is that correct? Does everybody have the items for reference? Okay, a resolution authorizing the purchase and outfit of two police vehicles from Tigard's landmark Ford Lincoln and authorizing financing through US Bancorp Government Leasing Finance. So we have a resolution here. So will the reporter call the roll on whether we add this item to the agenda and it would be after 7F?
Mr. Counsel President, I think we need a motion, and so I'll move to add that item to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries to add this item after 7F. Let me note that. Any other items? Okay. So that brings us to appearance of interest in citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizen comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may not be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. So we do have a sign up sheet. We have items listed as budget, which is one of our items tonight. Did anybody that signed up outside have comments outside of items on the agenda tonight? Okay, I will reference these when we get to those items. That brings us to our public hearings. Looks like we have three public hearings tonight. First one, item 5A, public hearing for proposed supplemental budget and staff report by Finance Director Lichten.
Thank you, Council President and Council. So tonight, the agenda is budget, looks or appears to be. So we'll start with, there's a need to budget for costs unknown at the time the original budget was adopted. A public hearing is required before the city council as the proposed amount of the appropriations are more than 15% of the contingency line item in the general reserve fund and also creates a new line item in the general fund, community development department. The proposed supplemental budget will allow for the unplanned purchase of a computer server here at City Hall. And that would be from the general reserve fund and the downtown Cottage Grove Retail Market Analysis Project, recognizing receipt of a grant from the Oregon Heritage for the analysis. The grant was unknown at the time the original budget was adopted. It's from staff's recommendation to full public hearing, which has been advertised for this date to be held before the city council and the Cottage Grove Sentinel, as was the original budget hearing.
All right. So public hearing for this proposed supplemental budget is now open. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak to this item? No, this is a different item, I think. Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Item 5B, public hearing on proposed uses of state shared revenues. Ms. Lichten?
Thank you. State law requires the city to hold two public hearings on the proposed uses of state shared revenues. One is before the budget committee, which was held May 16th, and one before the city council. Each hearing provides an opportunity for citizens of Cottage Grove to comment on the proposed uses of those funds. Staff's recommendation to hold a public hearing on the proposed uses of state shared revenue funds in relation to the entire budget.
All right, public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? If you would step up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Barbara Shaw. I live at 953 Southeast Street, and I might start this with saying, I had quite a good talk with Mike one day, and he set me straight on a lot of things that I was, I didn't understand or I thought was totally different than really what it was. And so I think there is no communication. So people like me, we just hear from Facebook and the neighbors and whatever, what's going on in here? And we do have a community meeting that's every Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month at the community center, and that is open for people to come and voice their opinions and try and get answers. And it's basically people helping people, but the problem, one of the problems, we need somebody there that has the authority to answer the questions, and they don't show up. It's like, they don't really care what the people of Cottage Grove say or want or what they. They're not there, and I would think that if you're in a position that you work at City Hall and you're working for tax money, off of tax money, you would be wanting to go to those meetings to find out how the people feel. One of the biggest problems you're having, and it's coming to a head right now, and it's not going to be much longer, that the rent in this town is horrendous, and they're allowing permits to be made for doing apartments because there is a tax break on apartments, and so they're doing, they're allowing those to be permits to be made. Those people are not low income. They're building those apartments. I just want you to know that we all out here know it, and if you go to one garage sale, you go to 10, you hear the same thing. And what's been happening is in a couple of months, you can't sustain $1,700 a month worth, 800-foot apartment. You just can't sustain that. And what's going to happen is we're all going to wind up in tent cities, which is one of my biggest problems is when the tent cities came in, we gave them free water, and I give them life back.
So I want to make a point of information here. This, this is a public hearing on a very specific item that's required.
Did I stand up not at the wrong time?
Maybe I picked you the wrong time.
Yeah, and so this isn't to cut you off, but just the, this is not an item on the public, on the agenda. So that first public hearing, that first hearing would have been the right one. So I'll let you finish off, but just so everybody else knows, we have three public hearings, and then we want to take items specific.
I don't understand all this because I don't work.
That's why I'm explaining it.
And I don't get paid from the state or from the city or from government funds to work here and answer these questions, but you can't get an answer for any of these things. Is anything being done about controlling the rent in this town? Anything being done controlling the building that supposedly they're doing it under low income and getting government my money, tax money, and then charging my grandkids $1,700 a month for their 800? Is there any, anybody doing anything? I don't, I mean, they got projects, new ones coming in. Just take care of the old ones. Let's take care of the people first. The school district is bad about that. They let the schools go down, and then all of a sudden we want another $90 million school. If you could have kept up the school, you wouldn't have to come to that problem. We're having the same thing with housing in this, in this town. And I'm quite honestly, if we're going to give people free things, sign me up. I want free water. I want free food. I want free doctors. I want all that stuff free that tent city and homeless people get that take out of my tax money and, and live off of my tax money. And they also, by the way, get money from the state too. They get social security, probably more than I get social security. But are you going to, are you going to fund me when I put a tent on my property? And you're going to give me free water, free electricity? You're going to give me all those things? Nobody's answering. That's what I need. I can't get an answer from anybody for anything. It's just people sit and stare at me.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a point? So we would be happy to speak with you if you call me anytime, or any of us, I'm sure, would welcome your call. This is not a back and forth, so basically we.
Oh, well, see, I understood that it was.
Yeah, no.
And I'm asking questions about the budget because I, it's came to the point, it's come to a head. I want to know if the city manager, he puts in his whole 40 hours a week for his pay, and if our assistant city manager puts in his whole 40 hours for his pay, and why do we need to?
So I'm going to, I'm going to have to stop you.
No, I'm going to have to go because that's what I need, and that's what, that's the biggest problem that's happened. Go down, build.
It's not the content, it's the timing. So be happy to connect with you in the right timing. So I'm going to ask you to please not interrupt. Are there any other comments on budget or the public hearing on the state, use of state shared revenues? Okay, hearing none. We're going to close that hearing. Our next public hearing is on the 2023-2024 budget. Staff report by Ms. Lichten.
Thank you. The City of Cottage Grove Budget Committee has met and approved the 2324 budget. The city council is now being asked to hold a public hearing to receive additional comment. The new fiscal year begins July 1, 2023, and it's a requirement that we have a budget in place no later than the new, June 30th. So we're coming upon that deadline. Staff has incorporated changes into the approved budget, which were brought before the council at the budget hearing for public comment. In the general fund, the police department, capital outlay category is proposed to add a line item for work equipment. It's to purchase needed radar equipment in the amount of $24,610. It's proposed to reduce the contingency line item in the general fund by that same amount. Surplus vehicles were sold at auction, and the proceeds from the sale were received in this current fiscal year. However, the radar units cannot be acquired until August of 2023 in the new fiscal year, creating the need to adjust the budget for next year. In the industrial park operation fund, it was necessary to acquire a loan from the water reserve fund during fiscal year 2223 to repay debt. And hopefully that's approved this evening. The budget for the repayment of that loan is proposed to create a transfer line to the water reserve fund in the amount of $151,000 with the contingency line item being reduced by that same amount for the repayment of that loan. There's also a change that isn't outlined in the memo that you received last Friday. For the water reserve fund, I've reduced the carryover in that water reserve fund by the $151,000 for the industrial park loan, but added it back in as a revenue, as a transfer in from the industrial park for effectively a net zero difference. Another change that isn't outlined in your memo previously was in the wastewater reserve fund. There is not a transfer from the general fund ARPA that is going to happen next year. It's happening this year. So I'm going to ask that we add $200,000 to the carry forward and not have the item as a transfer in, again, a net zero change to the budget. As a reminder, there's a number of funding requests that the budget committee did not take action on and had requested additional information specifically from Bohemian Mining Days, which had not been received as of the date of me writing the memo. The public hearing this evening is a requirement of Oregon revised statute and must be held prior to the city council adopting a budget resolution. The purpose of the hearing is to receive comments from the public regarding how the city spends its money. Of course, it's the staff's recommendation to hold that public hearing on the 2324 budget and consider making changes as requested or deemed appropriate that are allowed lawfully by Oregon budget law.
I'm now open the public hearing for item 5C. Need a public comment on this item?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joel Wrighton, 926 South R Street, Cottage Grove. Current president of Bohemian Mining Days. I've been involved with Bohemian Mining Days since 2008 and been president since 2019. I'm not here to discuss budgets and finances. What I can tell you, when we request, when information was requested from the information that I've been given and reading emails that was provided within 24 hours of the request. My message here is what does Bohemian Mining Days mean to Cottage Grove? In its heyday, Cottage Grove was a thriving community. Now Cottage Grove is basically a bedroom community for Eugene. How do we retain our identity of Cottage Grove and not become something that is just another small town? I think Bohemian Mining Days is a integral part of our identity of what's going on in Cottage Grove and how to retain the historical aspects of Cottage Grove, and how can we continue to provide that information and carry it on to the next generation? The, despite the able leadership of the city manager and council, which is fantastic, Cottage Grove is losing its identity. The important question is to ask, what does it matter? What does it matter? If Bohemian Mining Days goes away, is that a good thing, a bad thing? Does it matter? Doesn't really matter to me. It's one less thing off my plate. But I think from a historical standpoint, I spent the last, I was asked to write an article about Bohemian Mining Days, the mining history, the beginning of heat Bohemian Mining Days, and I spent, I've spent the last four weeks going through the book Bohemia, talking to just about everybody that's ever had anything to do with filming in this town, the Buster Keaton things, and I'm finding all kinds of information that other towns that have much less exposure to this activity is making much more hay out of. And we have a very difficult time trying to take that history, that historical information, moving it forward. I realize Bohemian Mining Days isn't the only way to make that happen, but it is a good way to make it happen, and it's a way we've been doing this since 1955. Bohemian Mining Days does a great job, but we have to be chasing dollars. How do we make that change? As I said, the timber story for the nugget is something that I have been doing and dealing with, you know, talking about the Chamber family, the Stewart family, you know, trying to go back and look at this very deep history that really formed the basis of the lumber industry in Oregon as well as some of the movie, the movie industry. So I think it's really important. I am recounted Faye Stewart, not this Faye Stewart, an older Faye Stewart, recalled in the book Bohemia a number of times that all we seem to do is fight. We fought over Booth Kelly over production, the Woodard family for forest, for forest acres. But when it came to coming together and making something happen in the community, we could always bury our differences and make it happen. I moved here in 1994. People, some of the criticisms we have for Bohemian Mining Days is we don't know what, we don't know what we're doing. When we moved here, some of you may not, but probably most of you know, my family developed the Norse Hustafest and mine out North Dakota. We started with $10,000, and now it's a $5 million operation. So we know how to make festivals work from a historic standpoint. We have had several experts look at our financial, Chris Woodard with his, with his organization. We've had executives from Hustafest that know about putting festivals together, how to make them work, what to spend money on, what not to spend money on, and we've had the entertainment and hospitality professors from both the U of O and OSU look at our financials and look at our plan, and they, they said, we really can't cut anything more. If we want to do something like this, it's the money we need to have. And I know we put a budget request in, and I apologize, we haven't apparently gotten the information we need, but I guess the question is, in the city of Cottage Grove, do you want to support Bohemian Mining Days? The expenses are getting to the point where we've come, we've tried a number of different ways to try to make that, make that happen from a financial standpoint, everywhere from, you know, paying admission to having, you know, larger concerts, you know, different things like that. So does, what does the city Cottage Grove want to do to support its heritage and Bohemian Mining Days? I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jolene?
Jolene Piper, 682 Benjamin Avenue here in Cottage Grove. I can just go by the short version if all you guys got your emails and were able to read those, or I can read our full email. I'm here as one of the members of Slavtown BMX, the board of directors that is trying to open the BMX track up here in Cottage Grove. So we come to you guys tonight to ask for funding for help for Slavtown BMX. We've held many meetings with city, with USA BMX, and we've come to across in the roads where we have to have a topographical and engineering map drawn up of a property before we can move forward. This is something that has to be done by USA BMX as our sanctioning government and carrier of our insurance policies. The cost of this is $10,000, and until we have this, we can't move forward with our project. We also have a great grant that we were awarded last year through the Yard Foundation for $35,000, which is a great start to get us going. We are required to meet 20,000 of that before they release those funds, which we're excited to get started now as we just received our 5013C letter about a month ago. So we're excited to kick that into high gear. This is an urgent time for us because, one, building season is better and the nicer, the nicer seasons, sorry, building is better in the nicer seasons, but also we really want to get our permit process started to get it in for the next meeting for the state level so we can get our permit process going. So, does anyone have any questions for us? Oh, you can't be back and forth. Thank you.
Do you have Barbara? I know she left. Is she still out there by chance? This is an opportunity to speak on the budget she was signed up for. Okay. Any further comment? All right, we'll close this public hearing. Brings us to our consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
And just point of clarification, we have two items under the consent agenda, A and B. Is the motion cover both? Okay, so we have a motion with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. Consent agenda is approved. Takes us to resolutions and, let's see, ordinances. Our first resolution is adopting the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2223, making appropriations. Ms. Lichten?
Thank you. Public hearing before the city council was held this evening to receive comments concerning the proposed supplemental budget. Or as 294.471 permits, the governing body to create supplemental budget for the fiscal year in which the regular budget has been adopted for certain and specific reasons, a budget hearing was conducted as the proposed budget changes create new line items and are greater than 15% contingency line item being adjusted in the general reserve fund. Supplemental budget is necessary at this time to appropriate funds for the replacement of the city hall computer server and to create a new line item, recognizing receipt of the Oregon Heritage Grant and corresponding expense for the downtown Cottage Grove Retail Market Analysis Project. The need was not anticipated at the time the original budget was prepared. It's our recommendation, after consideration of the public comment, make the necessary adjustments and adopt the resolution.
Hey, do we have any discussion?
Resolution number?
Any other resolution number?
2100.
Any discussion?
Mr. Counsel, Mr. Counsel President, I move that the council adopt resolution 2100.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay, recorder, please call the roll.
Counsel Fleck?
Aye.
Counsel Meridate?
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Stenning?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counsel Grier?
Aye.
Counsel Irvin?
Aye. The motion carries. Next item is resolution transferring appropriations within various funds. Ms. Lichten, your night.
Good evening. If I didn't get my steps earlier today, I'll get them this evening. Resolution, excuse me, ORS 294.450.
Can you turn the volume up or can you speak louder, stranger to the microphone, please?
Sorry about that. Is that helpful? I just didn't want it to poof back like that. All right, I'll try to do, look at it. ORS 294.450 allows the transfer of appropriations within a fund. It is necessary to move funds within the general fund, street fund, bicycle and footpath fund, water fund, wastewater fund, and I'm adding storm drain SDC fund. The resolutions reduces the amount in the contingency line items that correlate to the funds in the same amount in each fund, with the exception of the bicycle and footpath fund and the storm drain SDC fund. In the bicycle and footpath fund, capital outlay expenditures are reduced with an offsetting increase in materials and services. As with any reappropriation of funds, the net effect on the bottom line is zero. In the general fund, it's necessary to reappropriate money for the contingency line item in the internal services department to the city manager department, materials and services contractual services legal in the amount of $52,000. Police department, materials and services contractual services line item in the amount of, and I'm changing that from 98015 to 113125, and then the capital, radio and communication equipment line item in the amount of $15,000. The funds described above are needed for the reorganization of the police department. And these changes are coming about because we pay bills once a week, and every time we pay, at this time of year, I review where we are on our budget status, and this came to light that we still had additional contractual services to pay for June for both jail facilities and Lane County Sheriff's Office. Also in the general fund, the maintenance department, materials and services, electricity line item needs increase in the amount of $35,000 to cover electrical expense, and capital outlay, buildings and improvements line item needs increased by $85,000. This is in conjunction with the new roof at the community center. In the street fund, it's necessary to reappoint money from the contingency line in the internal services department to the street maintenance department contractual services line item in the amount of $40,000 for contracted street sweeping services while the city-owned street sweeper was being repaired, as well as various other unanticipated expenses. In the street sweeping department of the street fund, materials and services, equipment, maintenance, and repair line item needs to be increased in the amount of $32,700 for expenses associated with repairing the street sweeper owned by the city. In the bicycle and footpath fund, funds needed to be reappropriated for this capital outlay, building and improvements line item to materials and services in the amount of $10,000 for expenses associated with the Cottage Grove Community Pass Trail Grant expense and trail lighting repairs. In the water fund, water production department, materials and. In the water fund, water production department, materials and services contractual services needs increase in the amount of $5,500, building maintenance and repair line item in the amount of $1,000, equipment maintenance and repair line item in the amount of $20,000, and then the treatment chemical line item in the amount of $20,000. These expenses are for increased operating costs. The contingency line item in the internal services department will be reduced by the offsetting amount. In the wastewater fund, wastewater treatment department, materials and services, natural gas in the amount of $6,000, fuel and lubricants in the amount of $5,000, equipment maintenance and repair in the amount of $45,000, and the biosalages line item in the amount of $15,000 needs to be adjusted with a corresponding amount being reduced in the internal service department contingency line item. These expenses are for increased operating costs and anticipated, unanticipated repairs to the wastewater treatment plant. In the storm drain SDC fund, capital outlay in the amount of $13,600 needs to be adjusted with a corresponding amount being reduced in materials and services contractual services line item. The expense is related to the 10th Street Storm Drain Project. It's the staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution to reappropriate funds within the various funds. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Again, this is resolution 2101?
Correct.
Counselor Fleck?
Quick, quick question before I, um, make a motion.
We may have a change to the memo or the resolution itself, which I don't have with me. Yes. I think I do have it. I'm just gonna. Um, under the water fund, where it has the contingency amount, instead of 55,500, it needs to match and be the 46,500, then accordingly reduce or increasing the contingency balance in the budget.
So, quick question. Um, so we appropriate expenditures, not revenue.
Correct.
And so in that vein, I'm, I'm assuming that the, um, street sweeper, which I believe was rear-ended, may also have some revenue corresponding with that for the person who actually ran into the vehicle?
Certain insurance cost. Yeah, the insurance revenue would have come in, but we're just paying for the, the work to be done.
Right, thank you.
There were insurance proceeds received by the city from our carrier as well.
Okay, thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Council President, I'll move that resolution 2101 be adopted.
Do we?
I'm sorry, as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Meridie?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenning?
Aye.
Counselor Greer?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, resolution, resolution authorizing an interfund loan to the industrial park fund from the waste reserve fund. Slikan.
Water reserve fund, yes.
That's what it says. I'm sure something else came out of my mouth.
Water, wastewater, two different things, fortunately. Uh, the industrial park fund was not successful in selling lots to be able to carry the debt service this fiscal year. Uh, we have potential buyers to make the purchase of one or more of the available lots, but a purchase transaction will not be completed prior to June 30th of this fiscal year. In anticipation of the proceeds from the sale not being received, uh, this fiscal year, it is prudent to authorize an interfund loan in the amount of $151,000 from the water reserve fund to the industrial park fund to meet debt service requirements and to avoid a deficit cash flow. ORS 294.468 allows the interfund transfers repaid in one year and based on a repayment schedule. The loan is anticipated to be short-term with repayment occurring upon receipt of sale proceeds. The loan will be there 0% interest due to its short term. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution authorizing the interfund loan.
Any questions? Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Council President, I move that the council adopt resolution 2102.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Greer?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Meridie?
Aye.
Counselor Stenning?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye. Resolution 2102 passes.
Resolution, uh, resolutions concerning state shared revenues. Miss Likan.
Thank you for your patience. Sorry about that. ORS 221.770 pertaining to state shared revenues requires the city to adopt an ordinance or resolution stating that they want to receive state revenue sharing monies. It further requires cities to pass a resolution stating that the city provides at least four designated municipal services. Provisions of the law requires cities to certify that two public hearings were held, one before the budget committee and one before the city council giving citizens the opportunity to comment on uses of state shared revenues. The resolutions concerning state shared revenues are required every year if the city intends to receive these revenues in the following fiscal year. It's the staff's recommendation that the council adopt one resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues and adopt another resolution relating to the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. These are two separate resolutions that are required.
Okay. And will that need to be two separate motions for each one, or can we do it combined?
You can do it combined.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Council President, I move that the council adopt resolutions 2103 and 2104.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Myers, will you let me know if there's anybody on the, online that wants to, uh, make a comment during any of these sections? If there's any raised hands or anything?
We have a public hearings.
Okay, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stenning?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Greer?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Meridie?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Resolutions 2103 and 2104 pass. Okay. Resolution adopting the 2023, 2024 budget, making appropriations and imposing, categorizing ad valorem taxes. Miss Likan.
Thank you. Um, the city of Cottage Grove Budget Committee has met and approved, as you heard earlier, the 2324 budget. A public hearing before the city council was held this evening to receive additional comment. The new fiscal year begins July 1st, 2023, and the city is required to adopt the budget before the new fiscal year, no later than June 30th. Staff incorporated changes that are proposed and brought before the city council at the budget hearing by public comment. In the general fund, police department capital outlay category, it's proposed to add a line item for work equipment to purchase the needed radar equipment, $24,610, reducing the contingency line item in the like amount in the general fund. Surplus vehicles sold at auction and receiving the money this fiscal year, not available to purchase until next fiscal year, which makes the need to make the change to allow the purchase. Again, in the industrial park operation fund, necessary to acquire the loan, which we have done this evening from the water reserve fund and be able to repay debt approving, um, that by the city council this evening, to budget for the repayment of that loan, it is proposed to create a transfer line to the water reserve fund in the amount of $151,000 with the contingency line item being reduced by the same amount. Also in the water reserve fund, change the carryover amount to be 151,000, adding the transfer from the industrial fund of 151,000 with a net zero effect. Also in the water reserve fund, it's proposed that we transfer, um, uh, transfer from the general fund ARPA money will happen this current fiscal year, and we would reduce that in the proposed budget, um, and add it to the cash carryover again with a net effect of zero. So, as a reminder, you have a number of funding requests from the budget committee that they did not take action on and had requested additional information. So it's the staff's recommendation that the council consider the changes that have been proposed by staff, make any changes as deemed appropriate, and then approve the resolution adopting the 2324 budget, making appropriations, imposing in categories, categorizing ad valorem taxes. And of course, any questions, I'd be glad to answer them as you go along. Uh, we did this evening provide to you, um, the pages from the budget. They're numbered. They don't have all the other items that go with it, but it's, um, there were enough changes that I thought that it was appropriate to provide that this year, uh, different than we have in the past. And you can see, um, community promotions may be an area where you want to spend some of your time in 001034, uh, to consider the request from, uh, the various organizations that you've received.
Thank you. So I believe these were, this was the actual item that people signed up for, if I understand that properly, but we've heard, heard from them, so we can take those comments as they were and open it up for council discussion. Counselor Fleck?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So, um, these page numbers do not match our budget from the budget process. So what is the new, um, uh, amount of contingency in the general fund? I think before we have-
Page 19.
What's that?
Page 19 of the handout.
Okay.
Seems where the, the contingency would be.
Cause I think for us to have a discussion, we should look at what monies we have to work with before we start talking about whether we can appropriate. And it looks like it's the same?
No, if you look at the adopted column, that's where we put the-
Oh, thank you.
The revisions in.
So 390415?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we have a total of $390,415 to work with. Um, I know we had quite a few to discuss with. I guess I'd like to go ahead and address the, the BMD item first, if that's okay with the council. Um, you know, during the budget process, uh, we don't normally see requests of this size. Um, normally they're similar to the other requests we see of, you know, anywhere from, you know, a thousand to $5,000. And so when we see requests that come in at 38-plus thousand dollars, that's, um, kind of shocking, to be honest. Um, and so with that, um, you know, we're going to expect to have a little more information about, okay, what's happened, what's going on. Um, we are the people who are fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' dollars. And so, um, unfortunately with that item, um, I know that there's an email here showing that I received this on Saturday. I however did not. I received that today. And so, um, I've asked the council or the staff to look at my email to see what happened because it is not in my email. So, um, I don't know if there's a spam filter or what. Um, so I guess with that, I have not had enough time to look over this to make a decision. And for this amount of money, I think that my recommendation, um, and I mentioned this Friday morning, would be to create a subcommittee to look at this with the BMD folks and maybe our FANX folks, um, going forward so that we can make a decision on what to do. Uh, it will require a supplemental budget, which is kind of unfortunate, but there's, you know, there's some lingering questions for me, um, that I need to have answered. Um, and then there's also the question of whether this is actually for this fiscal year or the next, because there were some comments about the shortfall actually being in the following fiscal year, which would mean we would actually not be adopting anything in this budget anyway. So I guess these are some questions that I need to be, have answered before I can weigh in on this item. Um, you know, this is, you know, I know there's been a lot of, um, rhetoric behind the scenes about this, but I take this piece very, very seriously. Um, you know, this is the taxpayers' dollar and we are the ones who are responsible for that. So for this item especially, I would, I would want to, uh, maybe create a subcommittee of the council to look for, look into this in the, in the upcoming year.
Any other comments on this item?
Is it just on BMD or any of the other?
The whole, yeah, the budget.
So if we look back to, um, community promotions, the rural tourism grant projects, is that adopted amount, is that already planned to be spent on specific items? Or is that to be granted?
It's a number of items dealing with, um, our promotion material that we put in Traveling County Magazine and Oregon Travel Magazine, um, and, and brochures and other things that bring tourists to the area for specific opportunities to stay and do that, yeah.
So I was looking for any money that's there available to be dislodged. Not seeing any money.
Could you run off a page?
The rural tourism grant projects are also restricted by county law, and so they have to be used for things that bring people to stay in hotels.
Counselor Meridie, will you, uh, let us know what page?
That is on page seven.
Seven, thank you.
Do we have a, a list of all that came before us with their proposals available to us that might aid our discussion on?
So you had BMX, um, tonight they turned theirs, they, they talked about theirs and we got that today. Um, and theirs was 10,000. South Valley Farmers Markets in the budget already on page, um, seven for 3,000, and they've asked for an additional two. Um, Singing Creek asked for, and last year they asked for, um, 1,870, and this year the amount that they're requesting was, um, $3,000, uh, $1,000, a one-third of what the costs were for their, their project this year. So that one was one. That's one I didn't cover it down. The food hubs, um, Bohemia Food Hub is asking for 5,000. Um, that's one where staff would like to say, let's hold on that one because we're dealing with a couple of grants that have some outstanding funds. We have some funds that have been paid to, um, UFO that are, we'd like to get back because they didn't pay those out. Um, and some additional grant funds from, from Ford Foundation and from Cascade West Cog that are out there that weren't used in the previous two years ago. Um, and if they want those funds back or if we can use them for this, and if we can, then we just do that instead of, so we could take care of it that way. Um, and then, um, the carousel was 5,000 dollars. And I think that's all. And the BMD was 38.
Twelve.
Okay. Counselor Stenning?
Thank you. Um, can you, can you remind us maybe the, um, maybe the reasoning behind the discrepancy between the ask for the market and the proposed award?
Last year's ask was, was 3,000, and that's what they'd asked for. This year they're asking for the additional two because I think they wanted to do some, expand their market promotion and, um, yeah, they're, they're expanding their market promotion as well as creating some children's activities and everything that they've gotten from the Yard Foundation, and they're, they want to use this as a match for that.
Can you, didn't they ask for five and get three last year as well? I think they did, pretty sure.
I, I don't know. I don't have last year's budget.
Just curious, thank you.
And they did, you do have some new information as well on your desk from them showing their, their statistics and number of people coming with sales and stuff that they were asking for.
So, uh, Counselor Greer?
Point of clarity, Council President, Council. It looks like Singing-
I want to clarify, council president, council, it looks like Singing Creek's request was 1,200 this year, 600 and then 600.
But they missed the Acorn Library, didn't they?
I remember it being less than last year, but it...
Yeah, it is less than last year. Storytelling is 1,000, and, yeah, it says 600 for the camp instead of what they asked last year, that's what they're... So 1,600, you're right, yeah.
16 or 12?
Yeah.
16.
And if I'm remembering correctly, the Carousel actually needs 10,000, but they're only asking for five.
Right, as to use as a match. And they're asking for that for feasibility studies to help them find a location or types of locations and things to go along with the Carousel to make it a sustainable project and get out of the industrial park.
So I'll just say what I'm in favor of, and we can continue the discussion. In just gathering from the time of the budget hearing and the presentations that came in, I'm in support of Carousel for the reasons stated in that meeting, that will really assist in their further fundraising and getting the right location. I'm in favor of the BMX ask, very excited for what that can bring to the town. I know it's quite a bit, but that is kind of what it costs to get them to the next stage. I would love to hear more about the progress. It's been a while since we've heard, I hear about that a lot in town, hey, what's going on with BMX? Like, I don't know, not know yet. So that's exciting to hear. Singing Creek is another one, I know they touch a unique population in our town, and I'm supportive of them. South Valley Farmer's Market, I know last year, I think Councilor Sten was talking about, it was, we hadn't seen it before, we've seen it, I know my family's really been impressed with how they're running it, they're doing a good job, it's really reached out to the community, so I'm in, I'm in support of their request. Mr. Flick had, Councilor Flick had mentioned, you know, a committee meeting for BMD. I can see, I can see that possibly. At the same time, I liked an idea that you had, which was whatever can't be raised from the concert, the symphony in the park, using, I don't know if we actually can use that, or re-appropriating some of that, that money makes sense to me. I think it's a hugely important festival, just culturally. I'm a little bummed that there's been some interpersonal nonsense going on, but we can all come together and have a good time still. It would be great to have, as part of this, really well-laid-out in-kind donation figures that the city has historically provided for context. So happy to further that discussion, but as for the other ones, I give a thumbs up. Any further discussion? Councilor Savage?
Thank you so much, council president. I think I'll do the same, take my stamp at it. The South Valley Farmer's Market, I think, is a reasonable ask, although I'm curious to remember if they asked for 5,000 last year and they gave them three, and here we are doing it again, but I can actively see them growing. You can...
So they have a line item, is that correct?
Right.
They have a line item of three, so we're only talking about two.
Right, right.
Adding additional two. They're actively growing, it's been really neat watching them grow and do more, it's really exciting. Singing Creek, I think it's honorable to ask for less, that's, that's an easy give, because it sounds like they're only asking for what they need. The Food Hub, I'd really love to explore whether or not they can get those grants, so if we can leave that aside and come to that if we need to, if we can get those grants going, that'd be fantastic.
And what may happen there as well is the grant funds are actually more than the 5,000, and we may still do a supplemental budget or reappropriation to take that whatever amount, I think it's six or eight or somewhere around there, when you combine the two grants that are left, and put that over into their hands as well, so that it all goes, the grant funds go to them completely. So when we get that figured out, that would be something that'd come back as a reappropriation.
Yeah, I'm happy, TBD, to be determined. Carousel, I think it's honorable to know that they need 10,000, but only ask for five, that gives them skin in the game. BMX, I would be in favor of exactly that same thing, it's going to cost 10, but I would be absolutely comfortable saying 5,000 for sure, and here's your skin in the game. It gives them a nugget, it shows support, we're already providing the land, so it's an easy yes for 5,000.
Was it five or 10?
It's 10 is what they're asking for, and I'm splitting that in half. Just like the Carousel wanted 10, they didn't ask for 10, they asked for five. So I'm doing something similar with BMX, what they need is 10. What I feel comfortable doing personally would be five. And then BMD, because my understanding is that this year is covered, and this ask that was requested of us is for the 2024 festival, which I believe would be in the next technical budget, I think it's fine to set it aside and get more information, so we can really make a better decision on what we have in front of us, because I didn't see the information in the packets provided. But they also acknowledged that they didn't have all the information right away, they turned around within 24 hours of everything that they could, which I appreciate, but I still need more. But this will give them time to get things situated and give us the information, because it's not for another 13 months, so.
Thank you. Councilor Senate?
Would it be appropriate to ask a question of the BMX folks?
Absolutely.
Ms. Piper, was it?
Yes.
Can you explain, you said that the 10,000 was for the engineering and site design, but also to cover a match, can you explain how those both would happen?
And welcome back up to the podium for the online listeners.
Sorry, yeah, so last year, we applied for a grant for the Yarg Foundation, I've heard a couple people there talk about that, and they awarded us $35,000. We have to match 20,000 of that, which we've done a little bit of fundraising, but we couldn't really go after it, because we just got our 5013C letter last month, we applied last year, but we just got our letter last month, so we have a number of things planned out, so we have to match that 20,000 before we can get the 35,000 that they awarded us.
So the match can go toward anything, it just needs to be you putting toward the project?
Pardon me?
So the match can go toward something like the engineering, it just needs to be you contributing toward the project?
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely. They just want, you know, like you talked about, right, they just want to know that we're out there fundraising and that we're putting in the effort as well, before they just hand over the 35.
And you, I assume you have planned, I mean, I know you just got your letter, but...
Yes, we, the next, well, we have a lot planned that we've been talking about, and we've been just trying to do smaller things that didn't require a letter. We have a letter going out to businesses for actual opportunities, hopefully there, we have some fundraisers planned, we have the car wash coming up, which is a small one, but gets us going and gets our name out. The Woodard Foundation is also one that we've been in conversation with, we've also reached out to the community, sorry, Courtney's our secretary, she also makes a lot of the phone calls at the line.
Community Foundation?
Thank you, totally blanking, yes, we've also had conversations with them as well.
What's the timeline on the match that you need to?
They didn't necessarily give us a specific one, I really, we're trying not to drag that out as much, since they awarded it to us last fall.
Yeah.
So we would like to do it as soon as possible, obviously, for them, since that money's just been sitting there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Council Flick?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. And you know, it just dawned on me, I didn't declare my conflict of interest, so I work for Community Sharing Program, which is a $3,000 line item in community promotions, if we discuss that item, I will recuse myself. Thank you, forgot about that. I guess to give my two cents on the other applicants, I actually agree, I think, with both of the comments I've heard so far. The BMX, I'm really torn on, I think I agree with Councilor Savage on that one, that a 5,000 ask is kind of what we're doing for everybody else, and I think that that's kind of an appropriate level that I could support, I'm not saying I couldn't support more, but I think if we're trying to build consensus, that's the direction I would go. And I do agree, I think there's, you know, a lot of questions around the Food Hub, so it's something we can address later if we need to. And I guess I just want to follow up on the BMD, I mean, I actually totally also support BMD, I mean, this is something that, you know, we've been to in many locations, in fact, I was remembering, it actually was one time over there in the old Chambers property for a year or two, I'm trying to remember how many, it wasn't very many, but BMD's been around a long, long time, and I certainly want to support it, so I don't want any of the rhetoric that's been going out to take away from that, but this is a large ask, and so I just want folks to know that I'm comfortable about supporting, I just need to be very comfortable with what the decisions we make, and so that's kind of where I'm at on these things, thank you.
These are also worthy projects, I wish we could just open the bank and fund them all. But I like, I like the consensus building I've heard going on among the council, and we'll support, we'll support whatever comes to a motion.
Councilor Senate?
Just to clarify, if you guys don't mind, are we talking lowering their award to keep parity with other requests, or is there a reason, another reason that we don't want to give them the 10 that they ask for?
Council Flick?
I can offer, just for my point, yes, it's just to be in parity and, you know, fairness as far as, you know, the support we're offering to others, there's no rhyme or reason, like I said, if this was make or break, I certainly could support the other amount, I think it's a great project, but it is a larger ask as well. That's just my two cents, and like I said, I'm not set one direction or the other on it.
My reasoning for not wanting to lower it was just kind of this understanding of what a draw from outside, what an asset to the community it can be, I think the city would see a return from business to hotel house, you know, hotel, travel tax, all that, so that's where I was going with that.
It kind of seems to me, and you said it's not make or break, but I mean, until they get a design, they can't make a BMX track. I think it is make or break, and I think it's difficult not, it's difficult to think about them fundraising for a concept as opposed to something that's going to exist. I don't have any problem giving them the 10 to ask.
Question, at what point is there a monetary amount, or do we just say for folks that the city gives money to, do we ask them to come back and give us reports? Is this something that we could say, you know, we'd like a report to know how this was spent, how did it, you know?
Typically, when we do the notice saying, hey, you've gotten your award, and let us know when you need the money and send us a letter, but then you're also going to have to give some kind of a report, either a written report to the council, the larger ask, you're generally asked to come to the council and give a presentation.
Larger being like in the 10,000 area?
About five, 10,000 range, yes. Thank you.
It'd be cool to have a report anyway.
Yeah.
Councilor Drew?
Council President, I support adding the additional 2,000 for South Valley Farmer's Market, I think there, you can see they're growing and the vibrancy in having our own farmer's market in South Lane is very important. I support the Singing Creek Education Center in 1600, you can see how they really stretch those dollars and serve a very unique population of children, of speakers of Spanish and mom, primarily Guatemalan immigrants, with summer camp opportunities, and there's not, we talk a lot about youth opportunities in this community, and then looking at how there could be barrier, language barriers, so I appreciate that they have a niche population they're working with. Also support the Carousel's request, I think it's modest, given the level of work they're putting into the Carousel, and that's also an opportunity for the city to help be a catalyst to launch the next phase of the Cottage Grove Carousel, because it's temporarily in the industrial park, it can't be there forever. Their groups have been working on this for maybe as long as I've been alive, that's making me seem younger than I am. So let's, let's find a real home for the Carousel, and I think a feasibility study could really help, help launch it to the next phase, and I appreciate that the group currently managing it is treating it like a business. And is there another one? I also support the BMX, Subtown BMX, I would think 5,000, because it's my understanding they still need to continue fundraising up to 20,000 to unlock the Yarg Foundation's 35, so I'd say we'll give you 5,000, hopefully, maybe you could find someone who would match that, that's what I support.
Council Flick?
I'm wondering if a youth representative would love to give us some feedback on some of these items, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you're not comfortable, you don't need to chime in, but I'm curious.
Oh, thank you, you gave me a moment to collect my thoughts, I suppose, but, I mean, this is all so difficult, like, all of your guys' jobs up here trying to decide where all of this money goes, and all of the outlets, and all the work putting into this entire budget, all of these pages, like, it's a crazy amount of effort, and I'd just like to say, I guess, thank you to all the people who did this, and you guys as well. Ultimately, like, it's not my decision by any means, but just thank you guys for what you're doing here and taking all of this into account very seriously.
Thank you. All right. Counselor?
Could I propose a compromise of 7,500 for the BMX?
May.
I did want to reiterate my support for the full ask for the Farmer's Market, you can see and feel that growth, and it's fabulous, it brings people downtown in a way that it was always designed to. Going back to the BMX track, I work for a development consultant that's, we help nonprofits kind of get to their next level, that usually involves extensive fundraising, and I can tell you that there's not much, there's not much of a better fundraiser than a nice drawing of what's going to happen, and, you know, a clear direction in that sense with engineering, I would just love to see that happen. I understand people's desires to be fair, I just think I could get a lot of momentum from the go, you know, the green flag, as it were, so that's kind of where I'm at, thank you.
I guess I'm just going to say, Councilor Senate, you've convinced me, and I'm going to switch over for you, and with that, I'm just going to go ahead and float a motion that we appropriate $5,000 to the Carousel from Community Promotions, reducing contingency by the same, and $1,200 to Singing Creek, same...
16.
16, I'm sorry, 1,600, an additional 2,000 for Farmer's Market, and $10,000 for BMX.
You have a motion?
We need a second.
I would like to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I'll just comment briefly, I really appreciate the passion for the BMX bike track, I too can be swayed, so I appreciate that, so I'm all in.
And just a clarification on the motion, all of those would be coming out of contingency fund and balance.
In community promotions, community promotions are coming out of contingency.
All right, will the recorder please call the roll?
Council Savage?
Aye.
Council Stenner?
Aye.
Council Merity?
Aye.
Youth Representative?
Aye.
Council Drew?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Flut?
Aye.
Aye.
Is adopted.
I think with that, we also need to adopt the resolution as amended, correct? And so that would be, let me find my item here.
Is it 2105?
05? Okay. Mr. Council President, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2105 as amended.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and seconds. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drew?
Aye.
Counselor Flut?
Aye.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Stenner?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Resolution 2105 passes. Okay, our next item is resolution.
And do you want to take some action on giving us direction what to do with BMD later on after, you know, maybe after BMD is over next month, that we revisit that and have them report?
Yeah, I would love to create a subcommittee of, you know, potentially three counselors. I would love to be on that, you know, running a nonprofit. I certainly understand. I mean, we're facing some real budgetary crises as well. So I would love to meet with the BMD folks and, and our finance folks to kind of work through this, whether it's this fiscal year or next.
Does anybody have interest in being on that committee? Counselor Savage?
Counselor Irvin?
Yeah, I'll be on it. So Counselor Savage, Irvin, Flut on the committee. Thank you. All right, item 7F. And let's see, the addition was coming after that, right? So we are on item 7F, resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule, staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Council President. So the City Council has established a comprehensive fee schedule, which was created to include a listing of fees for various items or services provided by the city. This resolution amends six sections in the comprehensive fee schedule. In Section 1, Government, was amended to increase fingerprinting, police reports, printed document, and computer aided dispatch, report log fees in the police department. Thumb drive replaced compact disc as the device to transfer information. The evidence photos fee was increased from $10 to $40. And finally, fees were established for the request for the city's new body worn camera videos. The minimum fee is $25 and increases as the amount of megabits requested. 20 minutes of video equals 584 megabits. The fee helps cover the costs incurred by the police department to review the video, ensuring legal information is not released. We moved computer CDs, audio tapes, VHS, and DVDs. Those devices are no longer in use and have been replaced with USB thumb drives. Section 3 in Utilities was amended to reflect the 6% increase in water fees and 12% increase in wastewater fees for the 2023-24 fiscal year budget, as it was just adopted. Section 6 is Planning. The Type 1 Land Use Review Sign Permit and Home Occupation Fee was increased to $50 to reflect a minimum charge for services in the planning department. The Type 2 Code Interpretation Fee was changed to a non-refundable fee included, which includes actual costs. Historic Alteration and Historic Sign Permit Fees were increased to $100 to reflect similar fees paid for similar permits in the general planning department in Type 1 and Type 2 categories. In Type 3 Master Plan Development, a Use Review Fee of $80 was added and correction of the Land Use District Map Change Fee for $80 to 800, which was originally an error on our part, misjudging. And finally, another fee increases the appeal to the City Council from $200 to 400 and including actual costs. In Section 9, Middlefield Golf Course, course fees and cart rental fees were increased to assist and generate revenue to cover increasing course, golf course operation costs, staffing, review fees from local courses, and found middlefields fees are substantially lower in general. The fees were recommended at increasing approximately 20% and are still and are and will remain at a lower than courses that were reviewed. In Section 10, Miscellaneous, the impound fee was increased from $20 to 25, and daily care fee increased from $5 to $15 per day. This reflects increases in food and supplies. And finally, in Section 11, Community Center, Armory, Special Events, and Park Fees, the policies were amended to create uniformity in the language in the groups for the community center and armory and to clarify the deposit description. The fees were restricted to an hourly basis to reflect users' rentals and to increase rental revenue to cover the improvements made to the armory and the cleaning and maintenance costs. Reinformation, the system development charges were adjusted January 1st, 2023 pursuant to Section 5.16.040 of the municipal code. The changes in the SDCs were noted for your information and codification purposes. The fee increases were based on the construction cost index figures established in the Engineering News Record Magazine for 20 cities. The Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index raised 5.6% from December of 2021 to December of 2022. Resolution increases the SDC fees by 5.6% to reflect the increase in construction costs. Recommendation, the City Council has adopted the resolution and many of the comprehensive fee schedules.
So I guess I'd like to start by saying, you know, gosh, the, we've got some huge increases in our water, wastewater, and storm bill coming. It's really hard for me because I see the folks that have a hard time paying that bill. I also recognize, though, if we don't keep our system repaired, it's only going to get more expensive down the road. It's a tough pill to swallow, but unfortunately, one that we need to do it to keep our system together. And with that, I'll move that Resolution 2106 be adopted.
We have a motion with a second and discussion. So I would just second that sentiment. And reading through this is a gut punch. But at the same time, you gotta, gotta pay the bills. And it's just a sign of the times we're in. So you gotta be responsible and it is what it is. So Counselor Merity?
Yes, I, I think education about what, what the costs are is key. As, as our, as we saw, our citizen Ms. Shaft is, is feeling real pain from the bills. And she, she understands once she sees what, what's going on. And so it's really important. First off, it gets called a water bill, and it's not a water bill. It's a utility bill. So we have to, we have to be clear, it's covering much, much more than just the water that you're using. And that's part of our job is to help educate and understand, you know, it's, it's a lot of cost in those. The fuel costs have skyrocketed, materials costs have skyrocketed. Director Stewart, I believe you said the chemicals alone increased by 500% or something in that neighborhood, a lot anyway.
Yeah, Counselor, I, I don't think it's 500%, but it's more than doubled. And there for a while, we were receiving increases monthly based on fuel costs, delivery costs, chemical costs would line up. There was rationing of chemicals. Our herd processing for the bio solids, we received a 25% increase that we had to absorb this, middle of this year just to, to continue to process the bio solids. It's, the increases are, are what we're receiving from folks we purchase materials and services from. It's, it's just across the board.
And it is the nature of the beast that they, you, the fees should pay for the service.
That's right. That's, that's the way the enterprise zones are set up, is that the water, sewer, storm are paid by the users. And even our, we're struggling with the street, as you know, and this committee's working on. But it's the same thing. It's what we receive from the state federal government, our local gas acts is what pays for the operation of our street system.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Flut?
Aye.
Counselor Stenner?
Aye.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Drew?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
So Resolution 2106 passes. So now we have our item that we added on to the agenda. Resolution authorizing the purchase and outfit of two police vehicles from Tiger's Landmark Ford Lincoln and authorizing financing through US Bank Corp. Government Leasing and Finance. That report by Ms. Lichten.
Thank you. On June 12th, this council authorized the city manager to accept financing proposal from US Bank Corp. Government Leasing and Finance. And at that point, I thought that we were going to get the authorization approved by the council. He could sign the necessary documents. And then he sent me a packet that said, oh, and by the way, we need a resolution from the city council that does essentially the same thing as the motion did. So that's what's before you tonight. It's my recommendation to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the loan lease documents and any other documents that are in that financing proposal and package.
This is Resolution 2107.
And, and just for your information, we have the two cars. We ordered them almost two years ago. They finally came. They are 2023s. So we kind of do need to do this. I don't want to turn them back in.
I'm very hopeful that they come through with the loan and we receive it before June 30. So that's my goal.
Mr. Council President, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2107.
Got a motion and a second and a discussion. Recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Drew?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Stenner?
Aye.
Counselor Flut?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Resolution 2107 passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 7G is a second vote for an ordinance amending Chapter 3.10, Multiple Unit Property Tax Exemption Program of Cottage Grove Municipal Code. Staff report by Eric Monaghan.
Thank you, Council President, Counselors. Here tonight to, for the second vote on Ordinance 3173, amending Chapter 3.10 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code. It is recommended that the council consider this ordinance for second vote and adoption.
Okay. So Counselor Flut?
Did you want to start, Ms. Counsel Merity?
Yes, so in the agenda setting session, I had a huge communication issue. I wasn't able to clearly articulate what I had in mind, but I think towards the end, we, we got there. I would propose a change in the language under 310-020, Eligible Property, Item B. Point, I include X percent of total dwelling units to change the percentage. I worked up the three granted Mufti apartment complexes, Gateway, 540 Gateway of 40 units, Harrison Village at 80 units, and Pine Springs of 120 units. I asked the, the recorder to provide this in the packet. And so you should see something like this. I thought the bar was set much too high for a developer to consider offering units at an affordable rate. So I played with some numbers. I tend to want to go lower to make it a real enticement so that when they look at it, they go, well, you know, I, I think I could afford 5% to offer it affordable or something. But if I see that big number that was currently there, they would immediately shift to option II, which is include three or more elements. So I would like to, to see what the council would agree to for a percentage of the lower realm of affordable units. A change in text, which I think will not affect the, the reading. We can pass it after tonight.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Council President. I really appreciate this, this workup. This is a really good visual. I think it's really important that we have affordable housing offered in our community while we need old housing. I personally felt 25% is still not enough. But having this visual right here really, really does help. I really appreciate that. So even at 7%, Pine Springs bringing in 120 different units would need, I believe this is 8.4, units to be at affordable housing. And I think we round up at that point, not down. So that would require them to do nine units. So I think a solid 10%, thank you. I think a solid 10% would be even better than 7%. I could get on board with that. If you have a quad, a fourplex, even 10% would require you to do one, which turns out to be 25%. So I'm on board with what you're saying. Thank you for clarifying that.
If I may, I just want to point out that to be an enticement, the developer has to want to choose it. If we make it too high, they will go with the other option that doesn't give necessarily a, a public benefit to the public who needs it the most. It becomes a tenant amenity, which technically, I guess, is described as a public benefit. But I would tend to go more to go, to go low, to make it work, to make it really an enticement. Yes, I would love to see every developer be required to offer a quarter or more affordable, but nobody's going to build it. They can't afford to. But if it's five, they might, we might could kind of shame them into doing that, you know? And then that, that is some affordable units that are coming into, for our money and housing in general.
And a quad at 5% would still mean one, which is still 25%.
Counselor Flut?
Well, I, I will just offer, Counsel Merity, I also will acknowledge I was not understanding because I was thinking the discussion was around this being a requirement. And that was my fear is that that would, like you mentioned, absolutely kill, you know, these projects. And we need housing desperately. So I would just make a motion on whatever you think. And I will support any of these percentages. I will just qualify, though, that anything that's currently in application will not be impacted by this.
Counselor Drew?
Council President, Counselor Merity, thank you so much for putting this together and for your careful thought. I appreciate your realism in this. I would support 5% because looking at these numbers, you look at 540 Gateway, that's 40 units. If they chose this at 5%, two units are affordable for a household making 60% area median income or under. That's a household, about a household of four, making maybe 1875 or less a month. That's, that's a really significant impact on our community. And we do know that Cottage Grove has a higher population of people who are, have lower incomes than compared to the rest of the county and the rest of the state. So the rest of the state. So I would support, and I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance. What is the ordinance number?
Three one seven three.
You'll need to make a motion to amend.
Yeah. I motion to amend the ordinance with item three point one zero point zero two zero eligible property B and change the percentage to 5%.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional communication? Counsel Sennett?
Thank you. Wasn't it 10% your suggestion on Friday?
I was offering that, but I I was even getting cold feet with that.
Okay. It just seems like we're looking for a sweet spot of something that is an attractive option and is actually going to add some affordable housing to our roles. And I I like the look of 10% a lot more than the others, but to to actually put some affordable housing into our stock. But I mean, I guess I don't disapprove of five. I would just like to see more get done. But again, I think this has to be part of a larger discussion to 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 talk about how to encourage affordable housing in a time when it's it's almost an oxymoron in this community. So I look forward to continuing the discussion. I won't oppose 5%.
May I add, Council President, Counsel Sennett, thank you. I appreciate those comments. What I appreciate is staff perspective that MUPD, multi-unit property tax exemption, is one tool in our toolbox, but we are looking at a homeownership tax exemption, low income property tax exemption, LRTD, HOPD, a bunch of other fun acronyms, which are actual to have more teeth in them. But I what I like to see is that our MUPD also has an affordable housing component and option.
Yeah, I fall just slightly on the opposite side of that. I don't know how you're slightly on the opposite. I'm on the opposite side of that of without the MUPD. I do, I think we are looking at a bunch of other vehicles that will bring affordability in. I like the MUPD being the streamlined, super efficient, get housing built, multi-unit housing built with as few barriers as possible. I understand the logic of, okay, or perspective, we put it in, look at all the housing, surely we can tweak it a little bit more and and get get more of that benefit. So I understand that poll. I'm just not convinced by it in this case, but that's not because I have perfect information. It's just because I see other stuff that's in the works, and I think that that's a a better way to use it. I wish I had more information. Hopefully, we can get more. Just doing some quick math, I don't know, at those affordability rates, I was estimating that, say, the whoever, you know, developer develops it's going to sell it, someone's going to, you know, it's an investment typically. And if if you're, you know, making something affordable at a sub 800 under market rate, I figure 20, 25 years of useful life out of the investment on a tenant apartment or something like that. Each one of those units is, you know, close to over $200,000 over the life of that investment. And so that has to get advertised across, you know, in that upfront. So those, like, these are really actually fairly big impacts. When you look at the other requirements that you would have to put in there, you know, one of those units could possibly be paid for by some upfront stuff. And then, you know, what's money worth over time? So like, we don't have great information. I know we need more housing. If you can, this is once again, I'll bring up, like, if Oregon's influx of people is leveling off, and people are still moving out, that's going to be a natural free up of off the demand side. So this this may start course correcting, but we know we know we need units. So I I'm going to hold out on 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 this principle and look strongly forward to to the other vehicles that are specifically designed for submarket rate affordability. That's that's where I'm coming from on it. But we do have a motion. So I don't know if we want any further discussion. We have a motion and a second.
Just one final clarification. The developer still has the option not to choose the affordable. It's just making it so that it hopefully is a little bit appealing to them.
But this was three additional requirements that increased the the cost of development off of the original. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Counsel Sennett?
Aye.
Counsel Merity?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counsel Drier?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Nay.
All right, this is ordinance three one seven three.
Now, do we need to add some? So now the most of the ordinance has amended.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember. What was the ordinance number again?
Three one seven three.
Three one?
Seven three.
Seven three. So, Mr. Council President, I move that we adopt or have our second reading and adoption of ordinance number three one three seven as amended. What's that?
Three one seven three.
Three one seven three. I'm sorry, I transpose numbers.
Second.
Truth be told, I'm confused of what we just voted on then. I thought that's what we.
We voted on the amendment.
Okay. All right, so we amended it. Let's vote on passing it. All right. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Sennett?
Aye.
Counsel Merity?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counsel Drier?
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Nay.
So ordinance three one seven three has amended, passes. This brings us to Section eight, business from the city council. We have a presentation on the peace poll committee. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Council President. So on June 9, 2023, I met with representatives from the peace poll committee to discuss their desire to install a peace poll in Corner Park. The peace poll is a structure designed to encourage world peace. The committee would like to see it installed in Corner Park to supplement the peace tree, which was planted approximately three years ago. The proposed location is the site where the large old growth of this fir tree was removed approximately four years ago. It's a pretty prominent site that can be seen real well from Main Street. This evening, we have a representative from the committee to share their requests to the council.
Hello. My name is Brenda Sawyer. Six forty South Third in Cottage Grove. Three members of the committee are here tonight. And we're here representing the peace poll committee. This committee grew out of a high-studied group that wanted to do something for the community around peace and unity. We decided on a plan to put up a peace poll. We wanted to have community support and involvement. That so far has included passing around a questionnaire at different venues in town, asking for ideas about a structure, how to get in top contact with the committee, and asking for others to join the committee. We also had a table at the Green Living Fair to advertise the project and get more input. We got additional members and many ideas. We have reserved a table at Bohemia Mining Days so the community can participate in painting the unity rocks. That will be part of the project. We have talked with the garden club, urban forestry, public works, metalworkers, and rock painters to get information. We now have a more solidified plan.
My goal tonight is to help you visualize this proposed project. This quote on a fence board was used to help us determine the size we wanted. The actual artwork and materials will be very different in good ways, but this gave us a scale to work with. Our vision includes this size of a peace poll. Structure mounted on a concrete pad, surrounded by pavers with a concrete pad for a bench. Warehouse has offered to build a sturdy metal structure with grading around all of the sides that allows us to contain unity rocks. There's about 200 countries in the world, so there'll be about 200 unity rocks, as mentioned, being painted around Bohemia Mining Days is our vision going forward. And it allows with the grading for us to mount artwork and quotes around peace and unity. Now, for the overall layout. If you can imagine Main Street where you are and Corner Park, the sidewalk entrance to Corner Park, if you come in and walk down the sidewalk towards the gazebo in the center of the park, if you look out to the side, it's kind of a lane model of the peace tree is over here, and the peace poll is over there. And what we are proposing is that there be a sidewalk that facilitates, let's see if I want to get these words right, inclusive accessibility to three benches that will be situated around here and both the signage that will go along with the peace tree and the peace poll.
And just a reminder, for the people watching, they only hear through the mic on that podium, so.
I'm Joyce Settlemeyer, and he's Jim Settlemeyer. He forgot that part. We live here at 1365 West Harrison Avenue. And when we first started this project, we were excited to learn that there might be a possibility to tie a peace poll to the peace tree that the city had planted in February of 2020. You may be familiar with the Urban Forestry Council's efforts that planted a tree in Corner Park sprouted from seeds that survived the Hiroshima atomic blast. We are inspired by this earlier city effort and its uniting of community groups that were brought together in a peace in the peace tree dedication ceremony. Our expanding group has raised funds to move forward with the artwork and quotes for this unifying community project. We've generated artwork ideas with various community members, and we've received the wonderful warehouse or donation to construct the metal structure that you have modeled here contingent on your approval of this project. So we're requesting from you tonight fundamentally two things. One, your permission to place the peace poll in Corner Park, and two, a new section of the sidewalk, concrete pads, benches, and the pavers to tie the peace tree and the peace poll together in this currently lightly-used area of the park. So at this time, I'd like to ask if you have any questions, because we're still involving people in how this happens, and we'd like your input in this. I think I can ask that at this point.
Counsel Savage?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I admittedly am very excited to see this project come to fruition, so I'm I'm all in. But I just wanted to make a comment. Being a part of the Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion Committee for the League of Oregon Cities, you've used a lot of language this evening that I really appreciate, making sure that folks have accessibility to this, making sure that there's a path so somebody could go out and visit. I think that's really important, and I really appreciate the thought that you've put into this. I'm all in.
Counsel Drier?
Counsel President, thank you. I thank you so much for putting this presentation together. I really appreciate the visual nature of it. As someone who served in the Peace Corps for three years promoting peace, friendship, learning about other cultures, I think it's really important. And I could see this as a space for quiet reflection in our in our parks. So I appreciate you coming forward with this.
Counsel Flack?
So, yeah, this this seems like a wonderful idea. I one quick question on the sidewalk. Concrete actually gets kind of expensive. Do we have some donors for that, or is that the expectation the city is going to do that? I'm just kind of curious about that piece of it.
Mr. Stewart?
Counsel Flack, we have had plans for the last couple of years to build a paper circle around the peace tree and connect it with a path. There's a, yes, an added cost to put papers around the pole and a small connection that would be kind of in conjunction with what was originally intended by staff to get folks out to the peace tree and to be able to display the literature about the treaty in a in a much better fashion. And and so it'd be a smaller additional cost, but it could be incorporated into the project.
Thank you.
Counsel Merity?
I hate to bring rivalry into peacemaking, but Crestwell, City of Crestwell also possesses a Hiroshima peace tree, and they have done an incredible job. It has a lovely border, and their plaque is mounted on a stone, several stones, explaining the nature of the tree. And I think this will really help us be closer together, Crestwell and us, if we help develop this project and promote peace in our parks.
Counsel Sennett?
Yeah, I wanted to. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm all in favor. I it sounds like the the presentation would evolve over time and be kind of be able to change to be changed out. You said there'd be quotes on the sides. Is that is it something that can be that can kind of grow and change and?
Yes, there's a.
Keep eyes on itself, I guess?
Right. There's a cage around the metal structure that signs would be adhered to. So and our thought at this point would be have more than one language that the message is delivered in different languages, Braille, and local Kalapuaia language. We're hoping to incorporate and do some more work on inclusion, on on getting all the groups in our community represented. And then I would further extend an invitation to come to our booth. Should this be, should you approve it tonight, that we're going to have community helping with unity rocks at Bohemia Mining Days? So you could come by and paint one of the rocks that would be incorporated into the base of the peace poll.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, thank you for your presentation. I think the first, when I was reading this, my first thoughts were great, great concept. It needs to be aesthetically pleasing. It needs to be something that as people are driving through, coming, visiting, coming by, are, you know, their curiosity is awakened and enhance and it enhances the overall experience, even if they don't understand what what it is in the moment. So adding more context about what the construction material is going to be was helpful for that. I guess a concern would be what's the what is the plan for upkeep? We do have a real but unfortunate occurrence every once in a while of tagging. How would the structure hold up to that? What's the maintenance responsibilities? What would you envision for that?
Well, being made of metal and then the signs would be adhered to it, there's the surfaces would be not wooden painted like this, but probably metal or whatever's going to last best to be adhered to it, I guess. As far as your concern is that it would be vandalized? Is that your question?
I hope it won't be. But if it is, what what's the, the visual that I'm left with is that it's going to be a metal grate holding holding painted rocks. Is that correct?
On the base. That's just the bottom two feet, and then the top part has different signs in different languages. So it would cir, you know, around the sides would be the signs adhered. And so the reason it's metal and there's rocks is it's pretty sturdy. It's going to stand up to. stand up to, to the weather and be strong enough to be there.
And just the idea of if there is vandalism, I guess I can't speak for it forever, but we're still in the community, and there is a core group that has worked on this and essentially has met for a couple of years now, and we look forward to meeting for many more years. And as far as speaking to being able to switch things out, there is a door on this which allows you to interact and change out things and, and fix them very well. So it, it will be a living, changing thing through time that maybe we will have to, as we age out, look for somebody else to adopt that. But it is a very flexible structure.
And the other thing I don't know, it's on your diagram, it's like a storyboard that would be telling you about what the peace tree is about and what the peace pole is about. So it's kind of an area, like we have near the covered bridge by City Hall, there's a storyboard, and the new one that was put by the swinging bridge that will explain what, you know, that verbiage and wording will be worked with, what the city has already have in the works for the peace tree to be. Right now, there's not anything on it, because they're working on, they want to have something like you was mentioning. If you go to the Crestwell one, it's got a plaque, and there's four QRC codes that you can take your phone, and it explains the project, and so you can get some pretty in-depth knowledge about what the peace tree is about. And so it's an interactive product that we would have some more information about why we have a peace pole in Cottage Grove and who helped make it and why we would maintain it and have it in our city. And it's the location of where that tree was, it's right by the sidewalks, you can see it when you go by, so it's kind of a symbol of, you know, people can see it when they drive by the park or when they're in the park. So it'll be marked, and it is hard to see it, so you could, we could also provide more diagrams as we move forward in what is specifically going to be on it. We just wanted you to have a visual of size and what it might be.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Do you count, or need a particular direction?
If we can have a motion, it'd be special.
Motion? Okay. Would you like to entertain a motion?
How do we move? I move that the council authorized the city manager to greenlight development of the peace pole project.
That works.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Item 8B, award of Cottage Grove Reservoir Access Driveway Project, report by Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Council President, so on May 31st, 2023, the city posted an invitation to bid for the Cottage Grove Reservoir Access Driveway Project. The invitation to bid is for the improvements of the road accessing the future East Side Reservoir above the city's current reservoirs on East Madison Avenue. The improvements are necessary to meet Lake County's approval criteria for the conditional use permit approved for the future reservoir. The original bid closing was June 14th, 2023. Two addendums for the project were released answering potential bidder questions and extending the bid closing to 2:00 PM on June 20th, 2023, at Branch Engineering in Springfield. The intent to bid was advertised on May 31st, 2023 in the Daily Journal of Commerce. Branch Engineering's estimate for the project was $450,000 to $500,000. Following bids were received and opened on June 20th. Pacific excavation ink was $494,269. RNG excavating ink was $531,449. North Core USA LLC was $620,511.79. And the final bid was Wildish Construction Company for $858,055.50. The recommendation, the city council moved to award the Cottage Grove Reservoir Access Driveway Project contract to Pacific excavation in the amount of $494,269 and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents. Total cost of the contract will be paid for out of the water system development.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Flack?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. With that, I'll move that the council award the Cottage Grove Reservoir Access Driveway Project contract to Pacific excavation, boy, I'm having a hard time tonight, in the amount of $494,269 and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Counselor.
The confidence of Branch Engineering is high for this firm?
Yes, and actually, I believe its public works department's confidence is high, too. They, they participated in several projects recently in the community. They expanded the water treatment plant, and also rebuilt the G and Chestnut Project, and are currently working on fixing Art Storm and cannulas around town. So we, we, my department, myself, is very pleased with their work and cooperation, and they'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Counselor Stenith?
When I, when I was first reading this one, I couldn't put, this is for future development of another reservoir site or an existing one? Is this prep work for?
Mr. President, so I believe over the last four years, we had engaged with Mr. Losal for just approximately one and a half acres plus the right, the access right away to the property above 22nd Street, where directly it's about 250 feet elevation higher than our present reservoir. We engaged with Lake County and was able to get a conditional use permit for the reservoir. One of the criteria is for that conditional use permit, and we have a timeline to, to finish it. We actually are on an extension at present time to complete the road improvements necessary to perfect the conditional use permit. So this, this project has been in the works. It's just actually getting the access road to the site, completing the conditional use permit, and then we'll move into the reservoir design. Once we've completed our law and master plan, and plan essentially guides us on, on the size of the reservoir that would be prudent to establish there.
Thank you. Okay. We actually, we have a motion on this, right? Motion in a second. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Didn't actually mouth aye, but I meant to. So that, all ayes on that. Bless you. Our next item is the award of the street improvement contract. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Council President. So on May 9th, 2023, Cottage Grove and Crestwell, as we did last year, as council might remember, we did a joint invitation to bid for street improvements. Cottage Grove portion of the project is to chip seal West Main Street from River Road to R Street. And we had posted originally for South Gateway Boulevard, but then we made an addendum to actually do a scrub seal slash chip seal product on North River Road like we did last year on South River Road. And so, and then Crestwell's portion is to do their downtown portion of Oregon Avenue with a scrub seal and coating there. Sealed bids were due 2:00 PM on June 1st, 2023, here at Cottage Grove City Development Public Works Development Department. The intent to bid was advertised on May 12th, 2023 in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and also again on May 14th, 2023, in the Cottage Grove Sentinel and the Chronicle. One bid was received and opened on June 1st from Sierra Santa Fe Corporation. The bid document was reviewed and deemed complete, and it approved the chip seal project will be performed the week of July 21st. Right, I'd seen that there was a small amount of patching, leveling done this past week on the beginning portion of the, the North River Road. We will continue to do some more of that in areas that are rough and, let's say, prepared through this work. So let's decide, but just share that work has started. So the recommendation is for city council to award the street improvement contract to Sierra Santa Fe Corporation, amount $231,333 for the West Main Street and North River Road chip seal projects, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents. With the budget being adopted this evening, this project is one of the projects that was in the approved budget for the upcoming.
Counsel Flack?
So I guess I have a question, because I know when we did the other portion of River Road, there was a discussion about whether this section was still good enough, you know, to warrant doing a seal, you know, because it's in, it's in pretty bad shape. And I guess when we've gone, and I'm not going to articulate this well because I'm tired, but how do we determine if a road's condition's acceptable? I know we just had a presentation on the, you know, pavement condition index. And at what level do we say, no, we're just going to put this off and we're going to rebuild, rather than put money into it? And, and has this road, is that road still higher than that threshold?
Council President, Counsel Flack, thank you for the question. Last year's project was South River Road, we were kind of on the verge of, will this product actually work? Sierra Santa Fe, who's done a lot of this work in Florence and other communities in our area, I was able to check with them and find out that this application has done actually very well in those other communities. And specifically for the North River Road project, we are, that is why we are doing preparation ahead of the chip seal, scrub chip seal, is to work on enhancing those areas that are much rougher than physically. Essentially, we, we believe that by leveling and substantially, in some areas, increasing the thickness of the asphalt, probably upwards of an inch where it's really sunken in that, in an effort to, with that work plus the scrub seal, we believe that we'll be able to extend the life. Sierra Santa Fe's looking at, you know, 12-plus years with extended life. So I can't say with 100% confidence that this is going to be perfect and work, but in understanding our financial constraints and really trying to improve our streets, we're, I'm not saying experimenting, but we are probably going to know, hopefully this is going to provide the results that the professionals at work in the field believe it's going to happen. So I'm cautiously optimistic that this is going to extend the life and improve the reliability of that section of the road.
Well, it couldn't be any worse, could it?
Well, it could be Row River Road, but it's arguably that is worse.
Well, thank you.
And it could be 16th Street, too.
Oh, agreed. I'm sorry. I drive it often. So with that, Mr. Council President, I'll move that the city council award the street improvements contract to Sierra Santa Fe Corporation in the amount of $231,333 for West Main Street and North River Road chip seal projects, and authorize city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Counsel Merdick?
I was just, I, the scrub seal was a term unfamiliar to me.
Okay. Council President and Counsel Merdick, so essentially a scrub seal is, is they put down an extra thick layer of the emulsion, the liquid product, and then they have this V-shaped broom that essentially pushes it, and so it, it ends up filling in those lower spots with that emulsion. And then when you fill a rock into it, it kind of, it doesn't, you know, essentially make it leveled, but it does put more material in the areas that it needs it, you know. Yeah. So that's what the scrub seal is. A typical chip seal is, is they'll just use a truck with a spray bar, they'll spray the material, and then the chip applicator will just put a, a regular, uniform coated chips on the product. With the scrub seal, we use a little bit of 3/8 minus chip product, where the chip seal that we put on East Main will apply to West Main as a quarter 10. It's a little bit smaller rock, and it'll provide a little smoother ride specifically for the folks that use the icicles to maneuver on the streets. The, the North River Road will also receive a quarter 10 over the top of it, so it'll have that smoother finish, but the 3/8 will help fill those voids and, and those spots in the road.
Thank you, Director Stewart.
I'm trying to remember, do we have any manhole access on that section? There's, was it on Main Street by, kind of in front of the Dairy Mart? There's, when that, when that was redone, I don't know what the process is, either to bring up the manhole, but there remains a dip that, you know, either hit it or you have to go around it. I'm wondering, in this process, will, what would be the process of getting manhole covers back up to grade? So there's a smooth transition, or is there some sort of regulation saying they have to be below a certain amount?
Council President, that's one of the challenges, is you put more material on it, your manhole's going to stay the same. So what we will have to physically do is when we pass that point of tolerance, we'll have to actually come in and contract and have somebody put additional rings, which essentially lifts the manhole. So if you might have seen this past week, there's three manholes along Whittaker that were replaced. They came with a circular boring sheet board, the existing pavement. Had to rebuild the manhole cover structure because it was sitting on bricks and failure. So we have 11 of those that are currently under contract to fix. We will, I'm not 100% sure if any of them are on Main Street, but we will try to address those as resources and time allows, is to start lifting those up. For the ones on North River Road, if we are putting paving, patching, we'll have to lift those up at the time that work takes place because they will be considerably lower.
Thank you. And then the follow-up, kind of on the same vein as Counsel Flex, the, how, how new is this, whatever the term was, not, not chip seal, but scrub seal? How new, what kind of information do we have on longevity of this? Is it similar to this, the chip sealing?
Counsel, I wish, I wish I had the immediate answer. I can contact Sierra and, and find that information out, but their experience in Florence, where they've actually used this more in their roads down there, were, you know, aging out and, and in pretty rough shape, and so they've been using the scrub seal for, I believe, the past 10 years, and they have been really good results with it. But I'll, I'll have to ask them to give the additional longevity that they're looking for. They said their, their proposal to us is 12 years on this section.
Any further discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, our next item is discussion over canceling the July 24th council meeting. Mr. Myers?
Eugene Symphony is planned and scheduled to come to Cottage Grove on Monday, July 24th. That is your second council meeting, the fourth Monday, so your second council meeting for the month of July. Under your city charter, you are to meet once a month at least. So we do have a meeting on the 10th of July, and so you could cancel the 24th meeting so you could go and enjoy the symphony. Otherwise, you'll be here all by yourself while nobody else is at the symphony.
That doesn't sound fun at all. Counsel Black?
Well, I knew when we were looking at that date that this motion was going to be coming, so I moved that the city council cancel the July 24th, 2023 city council meeting.
Second. All right, we have a motion with a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Concerns of council? Counsel Black?
So I just mentioned, we had the Lane Area Commission on Transportation meeting recently. I think I mentioned the projects coming up that'll actually be next month. And thank you to our public works folks for working on a list of projects. There's no funding, but they're just in the event funding did happen to become available. They wanted each city to come up with a project. Doesn't necessarily have to be an ODOC facility, so pretty excited about that. El Rapa, I just had noticed too that we've, the El Rapa has different types of polluters. So Title V are the major polluters and air contaminated discharge permits are kind of the lesser but still permitted ones. Title V has to fund itself, kind of like our enterprise funds. Our fee schedule has not been enough for a few years now where it was costing us much more to do these permits than we were receiving. There was some testimony at the state and apparently that bill just passed. It was going to have like an 80% increase or 87% increase, and there was some pushback from industry. That was sort of amended in that it's going to be 43% right away and then another 40-some percent at the first of the year. So it was sort of amended, but not really. So, you know, I think the concern is that, you know, for industry, it's going to be a big impact, but I do know that we also were way behind. So certainly I personally have mixed feelings on that, but it should help the bottom line at El Rapa. That's my reports.
Counsel President, thank you. I just want to mention that the 2023 legislative session closed yesterday, so I look forward to reviewing everything that was passed. In particular, I'm interested in the Oregon Housing and Community Services budget. Just a few things that were passed that within that, that I, I hope staff will review that and truly seek out how we can make sure those funds come to our community, in particular to address the investments that we've already made with one-time funding so they can be sustainable and just make sure that the state knows that we're ready to take those funds and we can put them to good use. So there's the Oregon Housing and Community Services budget has 721 million to advance housing supply solutions, 349 million to respond to and prevent homelessness and housing instability. Again, these numbers are statewide. There's a general rule of 10% that the county, Lane County would get maybe 10% and then, then we advocate from there. 46 million to maintain community homelessness resources, which is what gives me hope compared to the current all-in initiative that's based off the governor's executive order that did not provide any funding for ongoing, the, the old dilapidated toys, only the new shiny toys. So hopefully there'll be some funding in there that can maintain the, the investments we've already made to, made to address the homeless crisis. 20 million to expand access to and preserve homeownership. In particular, we had a public comment today that mentioned you need to maintain the assets you have, just like the roads, before they get so dilapidated that you have to entirely build new. So I appreciate that, and I hope that staff will look into how we can advocate to get those resources into our community.
And actually, one of the other ones I heard today in a report from Lane County was that that 3414, the one I, I was bugging Mr. Mongan about, it was about requiring cities over 10,000 to have certain production quotas for building homes. And while I want us to build homes and units, I was terribly worried about requirements on the city to do that when interest rates, you know, we have no control over and, you know, many of the other factors, you know, costs of, you know, construction materials. And so it actually did not pass this year. So I'm hopeful that in the next legislative session, I'm sure this is to come back that we really advocate for, yes, we want to produce, but let's have something that's reasonable and maintain local control.
Well, I know Brenda's not here, but it pained me to have to interrupt and try to keep order in the, in the particular meeting agenda item because really value citizens' comments and communicating that to, to us, the council. So hopefully I can track her down and have a conversation with her, but just really want to communicate that. There's, there's a particular order for the items and things that are specified, but everybody feel free to come down, voice your concerns. We do need that. Speaking of concerns, there's, I don't know what's going on with utility poll readers. I don't know if anybody else is interacting with this, but I've had three, all from apparently different companies, saying that they need to come in the yard and look at my poll and read numbers. And they're, one of them, I, you know, I noticed around town, talked to other people, someone was possibly posing as one of these people and going in people's yards and stuff and driving around. I just, I don't know what we can do about that as far as maybe requiring notice or something where you can check and say, hey, is this a legit contractor with spectrum that wants to just come in? You know, random tides of the day, it's, yeah, not, not the best feeling. So I'll just mention that. I'll try to follow up with that at some point, but yeah, there's been three of them in the last couple of months. That's what has me concerned. One came today, so top of mind. Counsel Merida?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the, the good, the forces of good that are out there in the community. BMX getting, getting going again. I know that was a real asset back in the day and it'll be good to bring it back and that the peace poll's happening and that the people are rallying together to make BMD go, go again. And so there are, as much as we see the negative, there's a lot of people that are just rolling up their sleeves and getting their done. So thank you all.
All right, takes us to business from the city manager. Report from city manager.
So the first thing, just want to remind everyone, if you haven't talked to us about National League of Cities, please come in. The discount rate ends at the end of this week, so we'd like you to come in if you're interested in signing up for National League of Cities. Please do that this week so we can save about $400 and be able to get you registered. Also tonight, I wanted to just take a moment and make some comments on a letter to the editor that appeared in the Sentinel. There were a lot of fallacies and false statements and misstatements in that article, so I wanted to correct those. Number one, dealing with the purchase of the Middle, of Middlefield Golf Course. That property was under a 50-year agreement to let us do effluent unless it's sold. We had first right of refusal. If we did not take the first right of refusal, then our effluent agreement would terminate. The writer of the, letter to the editor was saying we didn't need to buy it. We had that set up. No private property owner is going to give us the right to do effluent indefinitely if they sell it. And so that first right of refusal was on there. It was a 50-year agreement, not a 99. In addition to that, the statement, the letter went on to say that we were notified by the Water Resources Department that we could not get the water right. That is completely untrue. The water right came with the property. It was an old dairy. It was a perfected right. Two certificates there. We got those. They transferred them to us. We have them. We've actually changed the point of diversion from the way, from Middlefield Golf Course over to the water treatment plant. So it's an old agricultural use, and so the use is from March to October, which is our very high flow time. So we have 0.6 million gallons a day at our Row River Treatment Plant that is a guaranteed certificated right that we purchased with the golf course as well. So that is all true. The statements in the, in the editorial were completely false. Also, they said that we were sued for the handicap ramps downtown. We have not been sued over the handicap ramps downtown, downtown. Those ramps are probably 40 to 50 years old, built before there were standards or before the standards have changed a number of times. And we're in the process of trying to figure out ways to update and improve handicap ramps throughout the community. We've got the revitalization project and the grant, the $5 million to do that downtown. We've spent $2 million in a grant to do around Lincoln Middle School. A lot of them weren't even there. And so we're replacing and doing that. We have the bicycle pedestrian plan underway right now as well, which is going to be prioritizing how to do and what to do on the most important places to do those handicap ramps first and then to continue to move that. We cannot do all of them at once. That is just not feasible. The article then also went on to talk about the Washington Street, Washington Avenue there by Cascade, saying that the state told us we did it wrong and we went ahead and did it anyway. That is completely false. The state did not get involved in the easement that was granted to Cascade. On July 12th, 2010, the city council met and in their council meeting approved tentatively to do that easement for Cascade. The purpose for the tentative improvement was so that they could go to the planning commission and get the approvals for their remodeling and conditional use and development of their properties around Washington. Those improvements were made. They came back to the council in, in February of 11, and the council formally approved that easement for Washington to be, for Cascade, to have the easement there to use that. It is an easement. The property has not been given away. It is still a city right of way. There are utilities under that, and there are obligations and responsibilities by the owner of the property that's using it to maintain that and take care of the curbs and keep it in the condition it was in 2010. They also raised an issue that I think is very concerning. They pointed out that the city manager met with individuals of the city council prior to an executive session dealing with performance evaluations. Open and free communication between the council and the city manager is very important. There is no way and under no leadership or management style is it to surprise or to keep things secret in going through that. Good governments is not that way. What is most troubling about this comment in the editorial is that was a discussion that was held in the executive session. So there is information that was leaked or presented or given to someone that was not done in a public session. The letter also then referred to a city manager in Portland and that the salary for a city manager in Portland is $115,000. There's a major problem with that. Portland does not have a city manager. Portland is a commissioned form of government where the commissioners head up bureaus of the city and three commissioners, I think, are over different bureaus. You end up with different people with different political backgrounds running or overseeing the police department or public works. In 2002, the city of Portland voted and they are changing their form of government to a council mayor form of government and having an administrator. So that'll be changing in 2005. But there is no city manager in Portland. There was a survey done by the city of North Bend by Portland State University. They surveyed nine cities, including North Bend, of about that size. The city of Cottage Grove was included. We were number seven, just barely above Florence and Baker City. All the other cities were well above Astoria, North Bend, the other one, Silverton, cities of similar size of Cottage Grove, Astoria, Lincoln City, Newport, Malala, and Silverton and North Bend were all higher. The city of Cottage Grove was less than the medium and less than the average of all the salaries for those other cities, those nine cities, city managers. So those are the things that, and I won't talk about the, the opinions that were expressed that I also disagree with, but those are the facts that need to be known and need to be out, that that information is wrong.
Thank you. All right, next item is business from the city attorney, which we have none this evening. We have no items to be removed from the consent agenda. Is that supposed to just say agenda?
No, from the consent agenda. If you've discussed it.
So if you removed it, that's where it would?
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. Oh, so we are adjourned.